Earned a trip to the state tournament. Awesome for them and congratulations to Ella Lout who recently broke a swim record from nineteen eighty-seven in the five hundred free swim. Way to go and we'll keep it short tonight. Mr. Ridgeway and administration.
So just a couple of communications. First of all, our policy committee meeting had was moved to October twentieth. I had a conflict when we went down to Chattanooga to check out the the program that Blue Oval suggested. We are meeting tomorrow morning about our cardiac emergency response plan with a task force. So it is written as something that the board has already authorized, but now we're going into implementation of how to do that, which is required by law. This Friday is the Hall of Fame induction, starting at four o'clock in the high school library. They have a few people inducting, being inducted, there's four, and then they'll be recognized at the game later. High school boo-bash, jazz band and choir concert, October, October twenty-third at seven. We are hosting a countywide PD Tuesday, November fourth. So basically, all teachers in the county will be coming to Harper Creek on that day to have professional development together. And then Harper holidays, Friday, November seventh, and Mr. Best has already talked about the athletic success, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you for that. And Madam Secretary, do you have any?
A couple of items. Um, we have a thanks to Dennis and Tina Johnson for their generous donation to the Harper Creek Radio Club. And an anonymous donation to the Harper Creek Champions Project. And there is some correspondence in your board packet from Marshall Academy that please take a look at, Board of Education members, and that's all.
All right, thank you for that. Presentations are audit twenty thousand, twenty-four, twenty-five. Christine Kratzler from Willis and Jersey. Please come on up and review your results.
Okay, well, thank you very much for allowing me to have a few minutes to present our twenty-five audit report for you. I understand as a full board, you're just receiving these reports tonight, but your finance committee has had a chance to review a draft, go over it with your business manager. So I will just hit the highlights for you this evening. So you ended the year in your general fund with about six point nine million dollars, which is about a sixteen and a half percent fund balance. We had one new standard that we had to implement this year related to your compensated absences, which is the payment of your leave time to your teachers, admin, staff. You've always had this calculation, but they changed the the methodology this year for the way it's calculated. So it doesn't really impact anything that you're doing. Your policies doesn't impact your general fund in any way. It really just impacts our annual statements with the audit. So but we did have one item that we were updating your reports this year with that. Your food service, we had one item in our report for you. You are still have what we call an excess fund balance, which I'm sure you're well aware of, working with the state to spend that down. But your program is still out of balance with that requirement. Overall, our audit went very well. I'd like to thank Ginger and her staff for providing us with all of our documentation that we requested. The records were well maintained, well organized, and we didn't have any issues obtaining the items that we needed for our audit this year. So overall, it went well. As you are just receiving them, if you have questions, as you have a chance to look at it, talk with Ginger. She can put you in touch with me if you have questions that you'd like us to address. But overall, it went very well this year.
Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
I will note, one more item, I apologize. I wanted to mention for your federal audit this year, you did have a single audit this year. We looked at your Grow Your Own program this year. So that's a new one for us this year to really dive into. But we had no issues, no findings with that program. So your federal audit was clean as well.
And just to share, I believe it was you that I talked to that, this is the second time in my tenure on the board that I've been asked to some different questions related to the financial portion of the school district, if I thought there was any malfeasance or anything like that. And of course, I was happy to answer the questions and give a glowing report. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Can move on to curriculum. And Mrs. Williams, as I understand, is under the weather this evening, and Mr. Ridgeway is going to take over for her.
All right, so hopefully you had a chance to take a look at Laura's report. Really, the biggest thing in the report that I saw was the report on our NWA scores, which are what our kids do three times a year to check progress. You can see the entire scores here on this link. But then if you went into the report a little bit further, you can see a comparison from last year to this year on both reading and math. Green scores indicated they went up, yellow indicated they went down some. But generally, the scores have gone up on the NWA. Specifically, if you look at the middle school in all, all grade levels, all subjects, they, the scores have gone up. So we are feeling good, as I said at the last meeting, with our M-step scores, that we're going in a good direction. I'm not sure if you've noticed this with Laura's reports, but they, they follow our strategic plan with the under drive student achievement priority. We have the benchmark data, building thinking classrooms. And if, if you have listened a little bit, we're taking a hard look of how we can get kids to critical think in the classroom. And our teachers are doing some different things within the classroom so that they, they can work on that. Educator training, cognitive coaching is something that Laura does with our staff. She's a certified trainer. And that saves us thousands of dollars a year in training. So I do appreciate her doing that. There's the student successes, we believe. Collaboration, as you know, we do meet every Wednesday after school with our early release time. And it really is a vital part of what we do. But we also have our staff meeting all kinds of times so that we can create that culture. I don't believe there's anything else that is, you know, new within the report, but it is always nice to see our staff, you know, doing their, their, their meetings and things that we're doing. There was an announcement right here under the MDE, M-I-M-T-S-S-S. So that is the Michigan Multi Tier Systems of Support. All of our buildings are receiving an award on the work that they're doing there. I think that we are at either the bronze or silver level, which means that we've implemented almost all of the APSS as required by the state. And if you talk to the county, we are ahead of other schools around us. So we feel pretty good about that. And so I think that's it. If you have any questions about the report?
My only question is, in the first grade, that's appears to be a soft spot in the numbers. Are we attributing that to anything particular?
I, I guess I'm unsure to, to, to get to a causal factor on that or what exactly is causing it to go down from year to year. You know, we did implement the new reading E-L-A curriculum, and sometimes we do go down a little bit, but other grades did go up, but kindergarten and first did go down on that. So maybe that's a piece of that pie. In terms of the math, I guess I'm unsure exactly why. I'd have to dig a little deeper to see the why.
I just wonder if, if there'd been any hindsight put in and was it possibly related to COVID, I mean, anything like that, but?
Interestingly enough, this year's kindergarteners would be the kids that were born during COVID. And the other, and then from there on up, are kids that lived through it. Now, kids coming in next year have not been in COVID. So we can no longer use that as an excuse.
We don't really look at it.
Yeah.
Your average is about a three to five hundred basis point increase year on year. I don't ever remember seeing anything that went back to.
Yeah, I, I mean, if you look at the stuff that's going up, we really are, it's much better data on the NWA scores. And it is a really good indication. I know that when I talked to staff, the implementation of the new, the new curriculums and math curriculum, which was implemented five years ago, has really made a difference. Now, the areas where it's down, we need to take a look to see why. I mean, what's going on. But I do want to celebrate the fact that we do see some good improvements that are occurring.
I know that she's following strategic planning for her reports, but I'm very excited to hear about the county IPD that's going on. I think that that's amazing that we're doing something for not only our teachers, but across the county. So if she can just give us an update when she comes, that'd be cool.
Oh, on the county PD? It's a, it's a county effort. It's not just us. It's a planning commission that's happening around the county. Fifteen hundred or so people will be here on that day. So it's, it's pretty cool. And we'll be in the high school, you know, using our facilities for that process. So I'm pretty excited to see how it comes off. It's something we haven't done since, well, nineteen ninety-six. And I'm old like that, so I remember things.
And you said it's going to be held where?
At our high school.
So we're going to get all the teachers in from all the?
Yes. So we'll use most of our classrooms, the auditorium, the library space. John's going to be really busy at food cooking.
That is going to be one big task to.
It is. Yep. Other counties have done it for, you know, I think Branch County's done it for three or four years. And the good thing is like going to a conference where you can choose your session. You don't just have to go to the ones that, you know, we have one thing that we're doing all day. It's you choose what you, either your passions are. Depends. Some are, are set up for two hours and many are set up for an hour.
Okay, we just, three hours is a long time for a conference. So I was like a session conference. I was just going to suggest that if that was
You referred to any four-lettered organization?
Oh, my goodness.
So, so Rob, do we have comparisons versus other schools in the area with this testing or?
So the NWA is, is a test that is nationally normed, so we can compare with nation as well as, as Michigan schools, yes.
Be interesting to see that.
Okay.
Because I mean, this is, you're starting out this meeting on a really positive note with the finding and something in this.
Yeah, this has been something.
Where we're at.
We've been waiting to see the, the achievement course jump because of the work that's being done by our staff. So it really is nice to see. And, and Laura, I mean, she's not here, but this is really her brainchild of how to make this all work, using research-based, evidence-based methodologies. So.
I had parent teacher conferences last week, and I asked all the teachers that I met with, you know, how, knowing that they've implemented new curriculum and like, how do you like it? How, and I heard across the board from middle school math to, you know, the elementary school with Amplify, that everybody was really pleased with, with the process, with the professional development. And it was nice to hear. It was nice to see like that full circle.
Yep, I will. I definitely pass it on to Laura. She might be watching online, who knows?
I also like the simple, the very simple approach, how this is laid out. It's easily readable and, and it tells the story very quickly. All right, anything else for Mrs. Williams via Mr. Ridgeway?
Feel better.
Okay, let's move on to facilities. Mr. Robinson.
Thank you. Pardon me. I don't have much of a voice left, so bear with me. So I submitted a report. One thing I want to touch on is, everybody, you know, we just heard of another donation to the Champions Program. The weight room, we removed all the equipment last week. The flooring was installed last week and over the weekend. So the flooring is done tomorrow. The equipment will start arriving. And we're hoping to have it completely open by the end of the week.
Well.
That's awesome.
I do have some pictures. I got crazy today and I need to get a chance to get them to Rob. But I'll have stuff for us for the next board meeting to show them before. It's pretty amazing.
Yeah, ribbon cutting.
Ribbon cutting, there you go.
So, but there's, you know, thank you to all the donors too for that. Mrs. Fiesel and her team, they, they went after it pretty hard and heavy along with the coaching staffs and stuff. So they did a great job. I think we're talking about bound stuff later, so I won't beat on that too much, are we? So anyway, we did a steering committee meeting.
We'll talk about that in a little bit. See, you have a question?
Yeah, are we doing anything for the donations? Like, are we recognizing, I know we said ribbon cutting, maybe jokingly, but I don't think that that's a crazy thing to do, especially because it was funded by people, you know, in the community? Are we?
You know, I, we haven't really discussed it yet.
Okay.
At least in, as far as me, now, I don't know.
I think, I think F R Director Melissa Fiesel, I think she is in process of figuring out how to recognize folks. Outside or inside of the weight room. Probably outside because it's a little more visible, but we have definitely discussed that. Looking, we can see if she has a finalized plan. I'll bring up the ribbon cutting idea though, as a potential thing to do.
I like that. I think it'd be a great way to recognize donors.
And so just our, our basic stuff, we're still plugging away at filter-first legislation. We have some new legislation about storm drainage, and we have to be, all of our buildings have to be certified. That's going to be another thing to the, to the pocketbook that the state is coming down with. But we're working on all of those things as well. But all in all, we're in good shape and we're excited to get this room open and get our kiddos back into the training facility.
They're ready. Planting fitness is closed right now, so they are really ready for the weight room to open.
So we are doing everything. And then, like I said, we'll talk to the committee later.
All right, anything further from Mr. Robinson? Now we'll move on to finance and Mrs. Obermeyer.
All right, I do have my regular reports. I'm going to talk a little bit about the cash balance. Sorry, I always mix things up on them. I just wanted to let you know that I opened five CDs through Southern Michigan Bank and Trust at four percent. There's no, I can withdraw at any time without any fees or anything like that. But it was equal to where my laugh was, and so might as well be local and I can transfer it same day, where my laugh takes. And it was the same percentage locked in. And then we earned around nineteen thousand in interest, which is down just slightly, but only because the CD money didn't, it'll show up next month. The other reports, are there any questions on the regular reports? I was going to talk mostly about our state budget versus our bottom line. A little bit, the state budget did finally get released. The per pupil was ten thousand fifty dollars per pupil. Where we estimated ten thousand. So that helped, helped us out a little bit, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. We're also, this is not a the pupil count is not done, is not audited, but we think we're up about thirty from spring count to two thousand seven hundred and forty, which would help at three hundred thousand. One thing I did want to, I should have started talking about first was, we just had the audit. We did add six hundred and thirty-one thousand to the bottom line, putting us at just a six point eight, six point nine million. So we were at sixteen point six percent fund balance. So we're in a better shape than what we originally thought we were going to be at. So then I, I came down into this, these revenue and expense adjustments based on all of my assumptions in June and based on what was released. One thing that it's great, our per pupil is up. But one thing that they leave out in the news headlines is that they cut the retirement revenue for us, one point two million. If you remember, when, when I presented the budget originally, I just didn't touch the retirement because there were so many things floating. I kept the revenue and the expense line item the same. So one point two is being taken out. Some expense adjustments, I won't go through each and every one, but I budgeted, I made up for some of that. But then, if you look at the bottom, estimated retirement percent decrease, I estimate it to be around six hundred thousand. So even with all of us being up thirty, with the pupil foundation being better, we're pretty much breaking even with where the original budget was. Now, if you look at the other factors, there's still things that I'm not presenting you a budget, right? But I wanted you to have an update of what the state legislator nation meant to our actual budget, and that's kind of where we're at.
So is that a six hundred thousand dollar hit then, if you just take the one point two versus the six hundred for the?
Yes. If you just look at
We didn't really count on.
Correct.
Minus six hundred we didn't count on.
Correct. Yes.
I think that in, if you take everything in concert with, we finished last year a little better than we thought.
Yep.
And what we have here, we're almost even.
Yes.
When, when we get to the revised budget, probably in December.
I'll deep, I, just every month, I'll probably come with some of the, some of this when I get closer and closer, you know what I mean? And then when we come in December.
The extra fifty dollars per student equated to a hundred and thirty thousand?
Hundred and thirty-seven thousand, yeah.
So six hundred minus hundred and thirty-seven, so four, four sixty-something. So.
So at the bottom line, like it was thirty-three thousand with these major things, a negative thirty-three thousand compared to where we, we, the original budget had us at negative seven ninety-eight. I still have us at negative eight hundred thousand. But I want to point out those factors aren't, like I haven't, I think the new hires, they did a good job of, of hiring a mix of higher and lower end and, you know, things like that. So I'm just saying, it's not suddenly all this money because of the great per pupil foundation. They left out some of the other things. But with the increase in, we added six hundred and thirty-one thousand, we were at sixteen point six. Even with this information, if we were to end it in that, if the other factors stayed the same, we'd still be at fourteen percent fund balance with eight hundred thousand.
Of course, budgeting conservatively will probably finish better than that.
That's the goal.
It's just unfortunate that we're picking up the one, minus one point two million and being offset by six hundred. That six hundred, that could have made us
Correct.
Get in front a lot faster. Anything further for Mrs. Obermeyer?
We are in good shape. I was kind of negative, but like, overall, we're in good shape.
I imagine that those numbers won't hurt some other districts, though, that didn't come up last year positive.
Just had a meeting and I had, I was like, did you look at all of this? And yeah, so.
And you think that estimation on the estimated retirement percentage decreases, is that conservative number, you think, or not?
No, I don't, I mean, I tend to go more conservative, but I think that's
So that could get better maybe?
Yes, yes.
Technology and Mr. Maynard over there.
Well, if it gets better, I guess we could use it up. So we, we budgeted our, our student devices conservatively last year as well because of the budget as well. And so we just kind of took a look at what would it take to actually where we would have been, because we ended up not, we ended up not purchasing the first grade devices that we would have bought. And so we took the fourth grade devices that came out, used them in first grade again. And so we, we got everything covered right now, for the most part. But should we, you know, get to that point, these numbers that gave you basically what it would take to get the first grade, the new computers that they would have got, as well as our kindergarten devices, our touchscreen Chromebooks that we keep on a much longer rotation because they don't get used as much, they're much more expensive. So we've got those. Some of those need to be replaced, so we're going to be, we have some money allocated to do that already. And some requests we've had for additional carts of computers at the middle school and whatnot. So what you're seeing on the list is basically what it would take if we were going to do everything. Two options, we had some first grade staff we're talking about, could touchscreens be an option for that grade? So we looked at that as well. And presented it out as most of this for your information at this point. The vendor is not getting back to me as fast as they should with actual pricing, so I used the last numbers I had. So it could be a little better than that, could be not, but I think, I think we should be set there. But with that, I'll take any questions you have.
Which, which, which option are you recommending?
I, I would like to do a little more digging before I pick one. We started out the one-to-one program with the kindergarten having touchscreen and everybody else having first grade that was after consulting with the various grade levels. Kindergarten, because it's before they're typically able to read, touchscreen made more sense there. First grade is when they start using the computer to type and log in and whatnot. So we went with regular ones. The downside of the touchscreen is besides the fifty percent cost increase, it can't really be, really be repaired because the screen is glass and it's all glued together. So when you break the screen on one of those, which is the most common failure we have, it would cost more than the computer to replace it. So we tried to use those sparingly. But I don't want that to be the only criteria, right? If their curriculum needs dictated, then I would look at it.
All right, any questions for Mr. Maynard? Thank you. Comments related to agenda items? No comments? All right, here is none. And we'll go on to the consent agenda. Madam Secretary.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve the consent agenda as follows. Approve the general fund checks, school service fund checks, school lunch, and student school activity fund checks in accordance with the list discussed. Approve the general fund checks, schools. Approve the following minutes as reviewed, September eighth, twenty twenty-five, public hearing, naming of facilities, meeting minutes. September eighth, twenty twenty-five, regular Board of Education meeting minutes. October ninth, twenty twenty-five, budget meeting minutes. October ninth, twenty twenty-five, budget committee meeting minutes.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have discussion? Hearing is seen on, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Alred, I vote yes. Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Move on to information and discussion. Item A, school safety. Mr. Ridgeway.
Just a quick update. We did talk about priorities, priorities for the bond issue or the potential bond issue with the safety committee and Mr. Robinson shared, this, this is what the, the film looks like for window, window film. And what the film does when it's on the window is it makes the windows stay. So if somebody tried to break in, let's say with a hammer or, you know, a sledgehammer, it would take them a long time. And Jim said he watched a video like a long time to get in. If somebody shot it with a gun, it would not break and open up. It would stay up. And so the same kind of thing, it would take a while because every second counts. And that was one thing we talked about. The other was shades on every window, their, the interior windows. So if somebody was in the school, we were in lockdown, we pulled these shades on every window in the school. It would keep the people visibly secure. There's never been anybody hurt behind a locked door in a school shooting. And so we know it's how critically important it is to get kids behind locked doors. We talked a little bit about Wild Spark pickup and drop off and came up, we brainstormed lots and lots of ideas of what to do, when not to do. We did say we're going to talk to Officer King because he, he was one of the people that was he works over there the most. And we don't want to do something and say, we're going to do this, but we have some ideas that he can at least consider. Because it does get backed up on the road and we can't, well, it's harder when things get backed up on the road and it's hard to say. We did talk about, we're adding a video door entrance at the alternative at the end of this hallway. We think that would be a good thing for safety. We are going to meet at buildings. So next meeting is at Snowm Elementary. And then I talked a little bit about the cardiac planning team meeting that's happening tomorrow morning, so that we can be ready and be all set for anybody that has heart issues within the building.
Questions? All right. Strategic plan update.
Yeah, just quick and, quick and, quick, quick and dirty. Administrator staff is working on succession planning. So the Grow Your Own program, we know, we talked about it at length. We know that's all about certified teachers and we have lots of people who will be graduating at nine this spring. And then we are also identifying administrators at the same time. And so there is a program through Western that I had, had mentioned. But really looking and encouraging people to step up into the next part. And it could be, you know, we think administrators, we think principals, but we have administrators like in the office here. You know, who's going to step in for those folks as they potentially retire or leave the district? We are in process of hiring an assistant superintendent. We did first round interviews last week. And excited, we have some finalists and we will be doing second round interviews in about another week. And hopefully I'll be coming to you with a recommendation at the next meeting. So.
Mr. Smith sat on the interview committee for almost all the interviews.
Very, very good candidate.
Yep, I'm excited. I am excited. You know, I'm, it's going to be sad to see Laura go, but I am glad that we had some really good candidates come, come to front of us. And then I've been talking with our communication vendor about the next round of videos. I've, I've mentioned that to the board, I mentioned to the community. And setting those up so that we can get ready for the bond issue that potentially could be coming up, so that we can answer questions as well as keep a positive front for the, for the school district. So people know all the great things that are happening. The fiscal stewardship is one piece of that pie, making sure people understand that this board has been diligently working to get the district in great financial position. When I started, we had a five percent fund balance, right? It's not, and this wasn't me doing it. This was this board. Our finance directors at the time, as well as getting us to what, sixteen point eight, is what she said?
Sixteen point six.
That's pretty impressive for a ten-year period. So I, I think the board has done a really nice job of not spending too much money. So those are really the things that we're working on toward strategic plan at this point.
Questions? All right, let's move on to bond discussion.
Okay, so our bond steering committee did meet last Wednesday and the group is meeting once a month, but I am trying to update weekly as to the progress. Right now, the biggest thing that I'm doing, or I say I'm doing, that we are doing is getting information from staff. So here's some, here's what we're thinking. Give us your thoughts on priorities. What are we missing? And so we're going around the district doing that. I'm doing it through the, my donors program. I'm also in, in process of scheduling community meetings. The first community meeting will be on November fifth at Sonoma. And then I am going to talk to the administrator staff tomorrow to schedule the others. Tentatively, I'd like to do the twelfth of November at Beetle Lake, the nineteenth of November at Wild Spark Elementary, and then pick a time at the middle school where we have the community come in and do walkthroughs of the building. So have a conversation and walkthrough. I think the walkthroughs are much more powerful than the conversation. So that's the part of the next up. Township meetings, any other organizations that meet, if you have people you think I should meet with or organizations, just please let me know and I will work on that. And I will work on that because the goal is to come to you in January with a potential um recommendation for a bond issue. Trying to think, anything else in the bond meeting? We did look at the technology piece this time, so we have that part of the coin in. So theoretically, one of the priorities is to change all the projectors in the classrooms, if you've been in the classrooms, they're pretty pretty light. You have to have the lights off to see them, um, we did here at the donuts and Bo had happened to be there with me that. Some of the document cameras might need to be replaced, and Jim said they do have document cameras on the priority list, so. Wifi as well, updating updating the entire wifi, cause we've heard that here at the board as well. I think that's it, um, so instead of having a steering committee meeting, we're going to be meeting at Sonoma Elementary in eleven five. That is gonna be the steering committee meeting at Sonoma. Next time.
I think it's been really good, uh, as as we've done the first two donuts, like just as a small thing, we heard that. There's a classroom in Beetle that doesn't have a toilet, right?
Yes.
And so I don't know that, that was on anybody's radar necessarily, and that makes that classroom maybe not usable like others. And so I was impressed that some of the little small things that got flushed out, that maybe even the um. Construction manager and architect um are not seeing.
One one small, one small one, so our press box, right now, we don't have open windows that open. And what that means is we cannot host a band festival, like a marching band festival, so if we just simply put in open windows that open, we can host. And that would make some sense and would show off our district more, so, small things like that, that don't cost very much that we could do. Really get people behind the effort.
Okay, thank you, uh, summer tax levy resolution.
Yeah, this is an annual thing, we do summer tax collection, um, the board has to act to do a summer tax collection. And so when we act and Ginger will notify the townships that we would like to do that for next year. Um, and what that does for us is it, by collecting the money, we don't have to borrow to get through September, we don't get paid. A s- school aid payment in September, and so if we have enough money, we don't have to borrow, we're saving money for the districts. No brainer.
Alright, let's move on to school of choice second semester.
We can, as a board, open up school of choice second semester, um, I don't believe it's worth it. Uh, and my reasoning is, when it was open, we would get five to ten students that would apply, and so. And I I said, oh well, so the teacher group, it's a little bit anxious to say, well, why are you adding more kids, are you just worried about the money coming in and? By getting only just a few kids, it doesn't necessarily help the budget that much. We can only get, I think it's twenty five percent based on the formula, is for the spring count, so. It doesn't make a lot of sense for us to open it up for the spring, I think we just continue on with what we're doing, which is summer, um. School of choice, um, but the board could move forward with doing it, if we did it, we would target just the classrooms that had space.
My only question, Rob, is um, do we know what our our fellow districts around Battle Creek do?
Um, you know, I I don't, I don't think they're open because I don't, I haven't seen those advertisements, but I could I could check to see.
My only worry is that that we're going net negative every time, and they're accepting students and then keeping them for the next coming year, but.
Potentially.
I don't see a problem with the with the recommendation.
One thing that we will share with you, um, so our people accounting person, Michelle Booker, she gets the information about where kids go. So I wanna make sure when when that information comes out, typically in December, you can see. Where our kids are going and what kids are coming to Harper Creek, that whole school of choice map. We typically receive about eight hundred students, but we typically have five hundred students that go elsewhere, so it's about a net three hundred. In difference in population.
Alright, uh, programming.
Alright, so we talked about AP testing at the last uh meeting, uh, some information about AP testing, so. Um, currently, we're paying half of the kids that pass the test, that's our current situation. Um, s- schools that do not co- do not uh. Uh, I'm sorry, schools that charge parents a hundred percent, Coldwater, Northwest and Jackson. Marshall and Athens charge a hundred percent for AP testing, Battle Creek, Penfield, Union City pay for the entire test. So that's kinda the mixed bag of what we have, and I don't have it on here as an access item, but my recommendation is that we pay fifty percent. Now, right now, we're doing fifty percent of those that pass, I think we should just go to fifty percent. The hit to the budget is just a couple thousand dollars, it's not like it's a huge hit, and then Ginger's department doesn't have to go through the reimbursement process. So currently, parents pay a hundred percent, and they get reimbursed fifty percent, so we plan to check out to parents. Uh, I think that would be, that time savings would be helpful, and it would be a nice gesture in the right direction, Ginger's looking at me as you say, it's just for this year if we did it?
Well, no, I'm just saying, it's not just our department, the counselors, the secretaries, that, so it is a time saver. I didn't wanna say it was only because of.
I thought you were gonna tell me this year only.
Well. No, I I was just trying to say that there's a lot more hands in it than.
And I speak in estimations, we currently have a four thousand dollar budget item for this, it would make it a six thousand dollar budget, it's not like it's a giant.
Right.
Now, if the board says, no, Rob, we wanna pay for all of it, we're gonna pay the twelve to fourteen thousand.
Alright, so with this uh potentially, knowing that we're paying fifty percent upfront, no matter what. Is this gonna grow our number of kids that are taking it then, and that might increase the number as well?
Um, most of the kids take it.
Okay, most of the kids take it.
Yes, there's not that many that don't take it, we do have a s- I'll call it scholarship program for kids that can't afford it based on free reduced lunch, so that that will stay in place. So some kids are definitely fully paying. Oh, other programming ideas, um, I'm kicking the idea about adding or adding back a middle school athletic director. And reason being, it's not because athletics are just so important, we need this, we we used to have it, we cut it in about two thousand thirteen. But we're finding we're having some issues because we have a lot of off staff coaches, and they need support, and you know. Our high school athletic director is in charge of middle school sports, but unfortunately, because of location. Um, she's unable to meet with or see these people on a daily basis, I think it's critically important. Um, when I was just having a brief discussion with with Bo about this and and Barry a little bit, also. We thought, okay, what if we did a five eight athletic director and had them oversee the um, some of the youth sports? Try to help with those programs as well, and so that was something I know they that. Bo and I very felt very strongly about, and so I'm gonna continue to tease this out and more than likely come with a recommendation, if the budget fits. Now, this would be a fairly part time position, this is not a full time, you know, full salary administrator, this would be a really part time position. Um, but with the expectation of growing the program, so that, you know, we feel really proud about how our athletics are doing in the high school and how it's managed. We wanna do the same with the with the middle school, and feel good about that.
Pretty more continuity?
Yeah.
Accountability, file?
I I I think it's a good idea, it's just a matter of can we afford it and can we can we afford it moving forward. Uh, other things that were just being thrown out, uh, esports, I I did bring this to the board a couple years ago. It's, it is becoming something that's implemented in most districts, esports is when kids are playing video games, but the video games are approved. And they do it as a team sport, um, and it's actually pretty cool if you go and actually watch it, it sounds different, but it really does work. For a certain population of kids that would never be involved with anything else, so. Last time I brought it to the table, it was about a ten thousand dollar one time expense and then maybe a four thousand ongoing expense. So again, I wanna bring that as an idea right now, but maybe tease that out as we move forward. And then the last thing, programming, I did go to Chattanooga, uh, with the Ford Blue Oval folks. Uh, me, myself, as well as all of the schools in the area, so us, Penfield, Marshall, Battle Creek Public and Lakeview. And they have, Blue Oval is going to give us a grant, um, to build what they call a fab lab, a fabrication lab. And what that would look like is is a project based learning um environment where kids would do projects, this is only for high school. Um, you may read in the paper that Marshall's doing K eight also, but that was with a different grant that they received. But we would look at high school and implementing this, and they would pay for all of the equipment that would go in the lab, three D printers. Laser printers or not laser, laser engravers and cutters, um, trying to think of all the other things, vinyl cutters. Some woodworking tools, but we could connect it to our our current woodworking, so we wouldn't need all those tools, but generally making projects. And I guess I'll, I'm gonna describe it just a little bit, I'm taking a little bit of time, but. Typically, when your kids have made, and they think about your own kids, they make a project for school, they do it at home, they bring it in, they're done, it's like a one one and done. This is supposed to be, you make a project, or actually, you make a prototype, you continue to improve the prototype. You put that prototype into design software, you cut out, you make the, you make it using these machine tools, and then you have a final product. So it's it's what you really do in the real world, you work for a company, you actually have to go through a process, it's not a do it and done. It's a do it, improve on it, improve upon, improve, improve, and typically, these were nine week to tw- to nine week to semester long projects. One project per student.
So it's a class?
It it could be, it could be one of two ways, and I think I think a hybrid of these would be, so. If you think about it as an as a elective class, where students would go in and do projects, that's one way to think about it. The other way is, students are in English class, they're reading a book, and they do a project based on that book, so it's. Incorporated into the lessons they're doing, I think to start with, it would have to be an elective, and they have an hour or two of the day. Where that teacher's working with core content teachers doing projects. And I think eventually, it would be the teacher doing core content projects or projects with core content teachers full time. That's how I think it would morph into, where we went Chattanooga, they had a school that was completely project based learning, a high school. And it was connected with Chattanooga State University, so when the kids were eleventh and twelfth grade, they were on a college schedule. So like their English class was a college English class, not a high school class, it was set up that way, you know, at college, you get what? Two hours twice a week as a class. And they, it was all on projects, it was interesting, very interesting, I don't think I'm gonna be quite that. Quick that jump yet, but at this point, it is good that Blue Oval, it'll, it's about a seventy to eighty thousand dollar grant, so pretty significant. And it would set us up, we have to find a location in the school, and then they'll come in and give us two and a half years of professional development to put it in. But they do wanna have it in place by next fall. Well, I I don't wanna say out loud because i- I could say it's gonna be in this room for sure, I wanna ha- at least have the staff give me input, I have ideas. I have one pretty good idea, uh, but I have ideas, but I don't wanna stomp on people and say, oh, I'm gonna lose my classroom, what are you gonna do? You already made the decision. But yes, I I think we'll, we find it, we took a, there was a myself, uh, the principal, high school principal, and a teacher went. And then I know the teacher was very, very excited about the program, let's say so.
So I have one more question, sorry for the two guys. Um, for the esports, would it be a club like robotics, or would it be like a sport like? Well, I guess, are all of them, no, so, are all of them sports clubs?
No, we, our seventh and eighth grader typically sports that we sponsor, typically, and I know that's football's a little different, cause that's, and lacrosse. I I would say it would be set up more like a. Club that we would do like, um, let me think, what would be a good example? What's that?
Bridge building club?
Bridge building, and so we pay the bridge building coach a.
Okay.
It'd be like. After school probably.
Alright, um, and move on to, if there's no more questions, move on to action item A, summer tax levy resolution, Madam Secretary.
Chair calls for the following resolution to be presented, whereas the board desires to request that each city. And or township in which the district is located agree to collect the summer tax levy of one hundred percent. Of annual school property taxes, including debt services upon property located within the district for twenty twenty six. Now therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent or designee is authorized and directed. To forward the governing body of each city and or township in the which the district is located. A copy of this board's resolution requesting that each such city and or township. Agree to collect the summer tax levy of one hundred percent of annual school property taxes, including debt services upon property. Located within the district for twenty twenty six. The superintendent or designee is authorized and directed to no- negotiate on behalf of the district. With the governing body of each city and or township in which the district is located for the reasonable expenses for collection of the district's summer tax levy. That the city and or township may bill under the revised school code. Any such proposed agreement shall be brought before this board for its approval or disapproval. All resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution are rescinded.
Been moved and supported, do we have discussion? Hearing and seen none, please call the roll, roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes, Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
And I vote yes. Alright, action item B, school of choice second semester.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education decline participation in schools of choice section one oh five. For the second semester of the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year.
So moved.
Been moved and supported, do we have discussion? Hearing and seen none, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes, Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Alright, thank you for that, action item C, two thousand twenty four, twenty five, audit approval.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five audit completed and presented. By the auditing firm of Willis and Jur- Jurassic? Thank you, as discussed and reviewed.
So moved.
Been moved and supported, do we have discussion? Hearing and seen none, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes, Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Alright, thank you for that, I did not see a second public comment on the um. On the agenda, so I just wanna give anybody a chance to make a second comment, if they wanted to. Hearing and seen none, we'll move on to items for the next meeting, and I think we might have a little discussion there.
Yeah, I think that we would be interested in having a discussion of policies that would be related to repeat offenses of behavioral issues.
And how, did any of the board or Mr. Ridgeway, are we thinking through the policy committee first?
Probably a good place to start, I think it'd be a review of what the policy actually states, and I think it would be open for a discussion of. You know, are there amendments or clarifications that might be needed?
Okay, so, um. Any idea on what you think those might look like, you know, just curious?
Um, just interested to understand like how we treat repeat offenses, and then.
Follow up somewhat to a to a point?
And then, um, in the uh, in the event that we have an expulsion, how are we treating? That as far as repeat offenses after expulsion.
Okay.
I don't know if there's any other areas that anybody's interested in.
I, this is very. I know we talked about and before the painting of that mural, or the theater. Remember like when that was gonna start, or did it? It did start? Can you just ask for an update when it was done, right? Did we?
I don't know.
Okay.
If so, then, yeah, I'll get your picture.
Okay. Well, thank you, Parla, for letting me know that.
And I think there was a little discussion again around, um. Uh, student discipline meetings and uh. So, I think we can talk uh. At some point in the future, and how those are run. With that being said, um, does anyone else have anything they want to contribute right now for the next meeting? If not, we will adjourn at seven twenty P M, good night.